Good morning. Today is Tuesday, December twenty first. The time is nine oh three. The Ada County Commission is in session to conduct its open business meeting. Mr. Davidson and I are present. Mr. Kenyon is not with us right now. She may come on the bridge or not, I really don't know. Hopefully, if you'd introduce yourself for the record. Is there anyone here?
Bob Batista, Expo Idaho.
David Phillips, Ada County Operations.
John Becker, a guest. Where's Chris go on business?
Jennifer Holly Grant, Specialist.
Jeremy Shabbat, Ada County Hermetics.
Yanica Comstock, Ada County Public Services.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Alouie Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Trent Triple, Clerk's Office.
Bob and Quaid, Assessor.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Dottie Owens, Coroner.
Beth Maugh, Treasurer.
Welcome all. We'll have a good meeting, I'm sure. We will... Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have some unfinished business. May I have a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Okay, I'll second the motion. I'll consider that unanimous consent request. Are there objections? Nope. Okay. Unfinished business has been removed from the table. We have application number two zero two one zero two two zero four Z O A. Ada County Development Services. Was table on December the eighth, public hearing for revised findings of fact and conclusions of law. Richard?
This is your Chairman, Commissioner Davidson. This is an amendment to our zoning ordinance to hopefully reduce the number of variance applications to county processes. It was tabled to allow staff time to update the documents to reflect your decision to incorporate the NHTSA vehicle classification standards for contractors' yards and the documents ready for your signature.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, this is one I'm excited to be signing. I think this is gonna be good for the people in unincorporated Ada County who are building on large lots. And it'll definitely cut down on the amount of time the Planning and Zoning Committee and the Board of Commissioners have to spend dealing with variances.
I think so, thank you. I think that's the reason that we started down this journey when April, May. And it takes this long to get it corrected. And how many variances will this prevent from even coming up?
Mr. Chairman, Chris, I don't have the exact number.
Well, just a percentage.
Yeah, maybe twenty-five percent of our variances.
That's good. And it looked like it was something we could do with... We could reduce the influence and the regulations and not have a negative impact on the community.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number two zero two one zero two two oh four Z O A. Ada County Development Services.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have procurement. With an award recommendation on two bids, beginning with bid two two zero one, zero zero one. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Today before you, under unfinished business, we have two awards. The first of which is award of bid two two zero zero one, the rebid of the Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project and would like to submit a recommendation of award letter for your consideration.
Can you read the award letter for the record?
I'd be happy to. After I put on my glasses. All right. A letter dated December twenty first, two thousand twenty-one, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two two zero zero one. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two two zero zero one to Engineered Structures Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. And that's it.
That's a lot of money, isn't it?
That is a lot of money.
Your estate too, and the amount to give?
Oh, yeah, it's the award of the contract to Engineered Structures, Inc., E S I. In the total bid amount of twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars.
Okay. Do we have any discussion, or I'm ready for a motion?
All right, Mr. Chair. Well, I will move to accept the recommendations of the evaluation committee and award bid two two zero zero one, rebid Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility to E S I, Inc., Incorporated Structures, Engineered Structures Incorporated, in the amount of twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen. Is that right? Or, sorry, twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-four?
Twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars.
Twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. And no sense.
And no sense.
All right.
Sounds like a lot of sense. Okay, I'll second that motion. Congratulations. We may be out there digging dirt pretty soon.
Start throwing dirt here soon.
We need to get a big grader, a big cat or something, or a little shovel.
Little shovel. Lots of little shovel.
Mr. Chairman, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony out there. I'll be coordinating that. With gold shovels for you all.
Yes. Okay.
Start the process.
All right, well, we've had motions, moved second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Now, we have award of bid two two zero one one, Ada County Jail Roof Replacement.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson. This is a award for... An award recommendation for bid two two zero one one, the Ada County Jail Roof Replacement, Section ten, two thousand twenty-two. The evaluation team has reviewed the bids and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Do you agree with the letter for the record?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Letter dated December twenty first, two thousand twenty-one, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two two zero one one. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two two zero one one to Nations Roof Mountain, LLC, as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay. Any discussion? Not? May I have a motion?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two two zero one one, Ada County Jail Roof Replacement, Section ten, two thousand twenty-two, to Nations Roof Mountain, LLC. In the amount of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
It awarded. Thank you. We now have one resolution this morning. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution two seven ten, Resolution for Destruction of Records. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Anyone who wants to speak to it? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number two seven one zero as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we now have... Licenses and transfers. I'll have them... I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit and one license transfer, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have a report from the Clerk's Office. Trent, you're here representing the clerk.
Mr. Chair, we're just excited that we have another challenging, unprecedented year behind us. We're excited for the upcoming year and all the possibilities that lie ahead, and especially for a chance for some of our folks to have some downtime over the next couple of weeks with the holidays upcoming, so... Just grateful we made it through this year.
Well, great.
That's really the only report that we have.
There've been a few ups and downs, but that's the way life goes.
We've made it.
We have, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. We now have a claims journal. I'll entertain a motion on the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions, one conditional pay increase, one introductory period completion. And we have a motion on personnel office actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have our distinguished assessor here with us, Mr. Robert Quaid. Do you have a good report for us?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to mention that we've got some tax cancellations. Next item on the agenda, we've got about eighty-five, eighty-six for this morning. Part of these, most of them have to do with the new homestead exemption that you comply for all year long. So far, we've processed over fourteen hundred tax cancellations because of that. It was a total of about one hundred and sixty-four million dollars, or just about a little over one and a half million dollars in taxes.
But they're not cancellations, they're adjustments. But we say they're cancellations because that's what the statute says.
I'll take the legislature, call them, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
But they're just adjustments.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Anything else for your office?
Merry Christmas.
Well, Merry Christmas to you. I'll entertain a motion on the eighty-nine tax cancellation slash adjustments on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for two thousand nineteen, five tax cancellations for two thousand twenty, and eighty-three tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have our distinguished treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner.
Are you using that jogger quite a bit now?
The jogger got a lot of good use. It was on full speed, around the clock. Yes, so...
Yesterday was the deadline, right?
Yesterday was the deadline. A very busy day, a lot of walk-ins, both at the courthouse and at Cloverdale. I would like to thank the county volunteers. We had people from different offices and departments who've been helping us these last few weeks, which was a really great way for us to be efficient in serving taxpayers, cost-effective. It's also great cross-training, so other county employees can see what we do this time of year. Last night, we did apply the two percent late charge as we were required to do by law. So that is on the parcels now that were not timely paid. And while, you know, by and large, it was a very successful tax collections, the large wires all came in timely and have been posted to the parcels. The next few weeks will continue to be really busy in terms of our administrative work, notably these tax cancellations, because the tax due date has come and gone. At this point, we're taking a look at each of these parcels to do the adjustments, as you call them. But we could be backing off payments, recalculating the taxes due, and then reapplying those payments. So manually intensive work for our office, so we'll still be very busy, but it was a good tax collection.
Are all these wires handled electronically, or are they... For the notifications on your records, or is that actually done manually?
Those are electronic. So they're fed wires that come in. And then we have, you know, Excel spreadsheets that we splice and dice it. Yeah.
Because that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's... We're the biggest share of our tax. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it from our office.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to deviate a little bit from the agenda. We have our coroner with us. We don't often get a report from you. Would you like to give us a report, or give us some words of wisdom?
Oh, absolutely, thank you. First and foremost, thank you for all the work that's gone into this facility, and it's been a challenge for sure. I'm happy to see it moving forward, and that'll benefit our community in so many ways. And I appreciate all of you and hope you all have a Merry Christmas. Our office is doing good, we're hanging in there. We're four down in investigations, just short-staffed, and everyone's chipping in, so we're hanging in.
Well, that seems to be the world. Short-staffed and hanging in. That's happened.
Doing what we can.
Across the fruited plain.
Yep.
I don't quite understand why, but it's happened. All right, thank you. Appreciate you being here, appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Development Services. As a final plat on the agenda, is there any discussion on the final plat? Richard?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, nothing else to add. This plat has been reviewed, has been found to comply with the applicable conditions of approval. We recommend the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp the plat.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? May I have a motion?
I move to approve the project number two zero zero six zero 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 seven one dash S, final plat for Hazelwood number nineteen, and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to weed and pest, may I have a motion on the release of lean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve one release of lean for weed and pest as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We now have some interim agreements at Expo Idaho. We have three flea markets. One road to show, one RV and show and sale. May I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the five interim event agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. Would you like to say anything about the agreements?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, we're back in business. We're going to start flooding you with a bunch of agreements. We've got a lot of people that have been anxiously waiting to get back in business and do some things, so getting you started a little at a time before the holiday starts.
Well, that's good. That's good. Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have nine agreements for the board to consider. We'll take up these agreements on the agenda. Is there any discussion? I've reviewed all the agreements. We have a couple of conflict agreements. We've normally done these earlier, are these just new ones?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, these agreements, we put out an advertisement for new conflict council. Really, our existing conflict council is really at capacity in terms of the number of clients that they have, so this will ease some of those pressures. And these are a few of the people that returned our call for bids. We vetted them, we're familiar with their work, and found them appropriate for conflict council.
Okay. Are you still looking for additional ones?
Yes. We are. We definitely have the need. So if we have people that apply and they're appropriate, we'll vet them as well.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the nine agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. This is our last meeting before Christmas. And thank you for all your diligent work and assistance in moving the county forward. We'll be in recess. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, the twenty-first day of December. The time is nine twenty-five. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Davidson and I are present. Mr. Kenyon is absent. Also with us are...
Jeremy Shabbat.
Jeremy... I can't say her last name.
Shabbat.
Shabbat. Jeremy Shabbat.
Yep.
Deputy Chief.
Correct.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there... Oh, IT guys here with us today. Are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. We have one resolution this morning. Resolution granting surplus Motorola radios to Gem County Fire and EMS. I'll open a public hearing on the resolution, Resolution number two seven zero nine. A resolution granting surplus Motorola radios to Gem County Fire and EMS. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to the resolution?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, so Gem County Fire and Rescue, or EMS, had an ambulance that burned to the ground, and in that process, they lost the radios. They reached out to us and asked if we had any spares, and we actually did. So there were two radios that are no longer compatible with our system here that we were able to loan to them through emergency management on two thirteen R R, which is a resource request. Since we have no use for the radios, it only made sense to us to donate or grant them permanent use of those radios.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How much equipment does Ada County end up donating or loaning?
To my knowledge, this is one of the first times we've used this mechanism to donate equipment. But talking to Chief Rain, it's worthwhile to look at some of our inventory that we don't have use for anymore and see if we can repurpose that, especially with some of our more rural agencies.
So we definitely have some surplus?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's mostly incompatible or outdated equipment.
Electronics mostly?
Some electronics, some durable medical goods as well. I don't know the exact quantities, but there is some.
Okay. I'm glad we can help.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number two seven oh nine as listed on the agenda.
Thank you, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. May I have a motion on the claims journal?
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated December 17th, 2021, regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions, one step increase, EMS pay plan. May I have a motion on the personnel actions?
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You want to give us an update?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson. Looking at our COVID numbers, Sean typically looks week to week at the moving case rate or transport rate for COVID patients, and I looked at it this morning, and that's flat, which is good news. There's been no decrease, but it's sitting right around that 5.4 level, and I think you reported that last week as well. Our volume is still up from what it's been traditionally, but we're seeing a little bit of this kind of a seasonal drop-off in volume that occurs, so that's been useful. The incentive program that we launched with the approval of the Board has been really, really positive for our department. The call volume per unit has been, gone down, so our people are less tasked and less busy at work. They're not getting bothered at home for calls for shifts where they're mandated back to work, so all of those type of things have been extremely positive and appreciated.
They've decreased the stress level on your staff.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, that's really important.
How's the general morale on your staff?
You know, it's better. It's still tough out there. There's a recovery period whenever you go through something like this where it's been just busy continually and lots of strain and stress, but I would say better.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Any accidents on the I-84 or anywhere due to icy traffic conditions so far?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, yeah, there's been some accidents. Usually, we see those accidents out towards the east end of the county, where it tends to ice up out there by the truck stops, slide-offs, and those type of things. Most of those don't end up in serious injury, but yeah, we have seen an uptick in accidents that are weather-related.
Okay. Well, I thank you for the update. Unless there's any further business, we'll be in recess.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Chair.